Call the town board, county, county order, we have an order from the president.
Okay.
Quiet!
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
I'll call the Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees to order, and we have a quorum, and our meeting was properly posted. Next, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is public appearances, and this is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. You'll see three subjects on the agenda, so if anybody has anything, did Lisa, did anybody?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, on to new business. Five A is discuss town concerns regarding village annexations and impact from development. Chris, I'll let you start.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Well, with your annexations, the impact that we have on specifically Vilas Hope Road for traffic has increased so much. We are going to do a traffic study on that this year to hopefully see what we can maybe benefit with that road, but then also how you tie in your roads where you're going to have a development and there's town development there already.
Okay.
That we need to have that discussion very early as to how roads are going to tie in or not. And I would think it should happen, you know, before you accept the annexation and you're talking to the developer about his developer agreement, as to what you're going to expect from him as to any of those improvements.
Okay.
Right?
So you're going to have, talking about the two-lane town roads versus a wider village road with curb gutter, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and how we handle that water, especially if it's just passing through our development.
Okay. We have a board meeting, I think, next Monday. I mean, this is stuff that we're going to, you know, we finally got together, we've got a new board, we've got two, well, one new member and a couple relatively new members, so this is the first time we've been in a long time. All right, so town roads.
And, you know, as you're looking at an annexation, I would think that you would have a developer's agreement before you take that annexation, because, you know, you've got over 100 acres east on Taylor Street that, you know, it's in the village, but you don't have a developer's agreement, and it never got developed, but it's just sitting there.
You're talking about where Three Oaks was supposed to be, or whatever it was called?
Yeah.
Chris, there was a developer agreement for Three Oaks, and then he went.
Belly up, did he? Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we do have a pre-annexation agreement, so that's probably where we can deal with some of these issues, and then we wait on the developer agreement until it's been annexed in and they go through the various approvals. But the pre-annexation agreement would be.
Would ensure that something is going to happen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the road issue would be in the pre-annexation agreement?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Anyway, I think that a little broader than that, though, is we'll take Vilas Road coming from the south, you go from village on one side, town on one side, village on two sides, town on one side, village on one side. We need to be smarter about how we're annexing this, and it becomes very confusing, who's going to maintain the roads? Who's going to repair the roads? It could be easily done if we don't have this, you know, spot here and a spot there.
And the only other thing on annexations, you know, if you're going to annex property and you're going to have construction there, it should be on sewer and water. Why are you putting in on well-insepted?
Are you referring to, I can't remember the name now, down south on Vilas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right next to the rail tracks, there's a little sliver of town so they can get back into the back, but it's.
And, you know, I understand why it's drawn that way, but it's still not.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Doesn't make a lot of sense, you know. At some point, take your pumping station.
That's one reason we haven't done much development east, because geography would indicate we'd have to put a lift station there or something, and we have to think of that stuff.
And how you get access to BB.
Because it all goes to Madison.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever we generate here goes to Madison.
Okay. He's taking notes here, so when we have our board meeting on Monday, we have information correct. Okay, and yes, as impact from developments, you were basically talking about the roadways and.
Connections and.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on that?
Anyone else?
Well, you know, my thing, you get, you've got four annexations going right now, the way it looks, the three new ones and then the old one that's now come into place again, the quarry, whatever it is, quarry.
Oh, quarry.
Right. And, you know, the impact on the schools is just massive, and of course, when you guys annex and build more houses, it affects us tax-wise, too. The school district right now is $53 million in debt. I don't know if you people know that or not. And looking for another 80-some million, or 70-some, or 60-some, or whatever they can get, you know, we're just lighting up the fact that in between, in the villages, I mean, the more houses are going to be built, the more the school has to look at and say, oh, God, we need more schools. And I don't know how many of you knew about the debt of the schools, you wouldn't think so, when they're trying to get more money. And all that I see, what's happening now, you know, I can see one annexation going forward or two, but boy, you guys are going to get hit with a ton of houses in the next five, six years.
I know John and I are both on the facilities committee, he's been able to get to a lot more of the meetings than I have, so he's probably got more information than anybody on our board. I would guess Melissa's been to some of them.
What's the, was the annexation approved on Shady Grove?
The annexation was approved.
Or not the annexation, but the zoning?
Zoning has not come forward yet. No, just the annexation.
That's interesting. What's the, what's the case, sir?
The last I heard from the developer's attorney was, he was going on vacation, they were going to contact me, and he got back, and I haven't heard anything since, that was a month or two.
But there's like no problem with it, or is there a problem?
We have to, they have to submit a zoning proposal to us.
Yes.
And see, I don't know what their plan is for zoning, I mean, obviously, people are hearing voices of concern, so we can't deal with it if we don't have something from them yet, so it's been off the radar for a little bit. Okay. All right, any comments, village, town? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, yep?
I just, I just want to reemphasize all of Mike's points, especially about the school district. I mean, you just, you just don't realize, you know, when you're saying only seven, or .73 students per household, is that actually what you guys go by? I served on that school board for a lot of years, and we never, ever assumed .73 children per household, ever. Where did that number come from? According to the school board, they tell you that they're out of room. According to what you tell us, you're not out of room. So I'd just like to get to the basis of what's the actual facts are.
Okay. John, have they addressed that number, that ratio of children at all, or what have you heard?
I haven't heard anything. They do have projections about the growth, and obviously, primarily in the village of Cottage Grove, so that's the projections going out.
Okay. I mean, I heard that, but I just didn't hear any numbers they're using for their calculations.
The school's never told us that they're.
Right.
Full, by any means.
Yeah.
If anything, they're planning for, they're planning for between 1,000 and 2,000.
Right, but they just told us in a meeting recently that that's not the case. They haven't told you that.
They, oh, they came to see you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. We had them here a year ago, maybe?
Over, over a year.
Or over a year ago, and so we'll probably invite them back at some point again, too. It's been a while.
Who are you? Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they still have a certain percentage of even open enrollment, so it's hard to believe.
Yeah.
The district is full, so I've never heard that.
Well, they think they got to get their facts, somebody's got to get their facts right on this, so we're all playing on the same, you know.
We all have, we all need that same information.
And we need the complete information from the school, not just little tidbits here and there, oh, yeah, this is this, but, oh, we forgot to tell you the rest of the story, you know, we'd like to have them play Paul Harvey and give us the whole story.
And we did ask the school district to put the debt on the survey that all of you got, right? You got your surveys? And obviously, they did not do that. And I thought the survey sucked, to be quite frank about it. It's a grandiose survey to make people sign to say, oh, God, save the children, you know, and I agree with that, but also, we got to look at taxpayers, too.
Anything else, and Jeff, you?
I just want to talk very, very briefly about the proposed widened development on Vilas.
Okay.
Looking, you know, while the town is powerless to go ahead and have any meaningful or, or, yeah, meaningful input, you know, when it comes to annexation requests and the like. The proposals that was submitted to you guys, because of the fact that the developer didn't want to spend the money, or as much money, put it that way, for roads, that he was going to have all of the houses come out onto Vilas Road. And, you know, you look at other developments on major thoroughfares, granted, some of them are on county roads here within the village, and none of them are but up to a major road. There's always an inside, if you will, road where all of the houses are located, and then there's a single or probably two egresses out to the main road, rather than having, what is it, in the teens, driveways, one right after another, after another, after another, at a major intersection on the weekends for all the rugby that's going on, the people at the park. Vilas Road in and of itself is horrendously busy now, just because of the growth in the village and just people moving in general, that, you know, I thought it was, you know, poor planning, you know, I'll be very blunt about it, to go ahead and even seriously consider having that sort of development and not making the developer move the driveways or flip everything around, so the driveways face an internal road, rather than having everything come out onto Vilas. And I'd heard, and it's only, it's hearsay, and me, on my part, I believe, was that there was even talk of having a, an agreement with the people who buy the house, that they have to have a special driveway, so people cannot back into Vilas Road. They have to have a turnaround in order to drive out of their driveway. And I mean, when you're starting to put restrictions like that, or theoretically put restrictions like that, kind of tells me that, you know, maybe somebody isn't doing their homework quite well enough to, you know, use some common sense, I guess, you know, and I know it's far from being done, but, you know, if you could seriously take a real hard look at that, you know, I'm speaking from the EMS side of the house now, with that many, with the amount of traffic that flows through there, the speed that the traffic is, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen, no pun intended.
I mean, I remember the discussion about the driveway turnarounds, but I don't, that was a long time.
Speed, the speedway don't go going down to 25 miles per hour.
Yeah.
So it'd be just like any other residential area.
But, you know, it's like every other residential street, that a lot of times, speed limits are advisory. And we have very limited number of north-south roads that go through town and the village. We need to preserve that roadway for future growth that you're probably going to have, not that we're going to have, that are going to be using that road, and how that's going to be improved in the future to handle that growth. You know, it's probably not going to stay a two-lane rural road.
Right.
You'll upgrade that.
Yeah. Don't quote me on these figures, but if I remember, this development will push, I think, the daily traffic to a little above 2,000 per day, and at least our engineers' recommendation would be, you wouldn't expand the roadway until it reached 10,000 per day, so we're, it's well in capacity as far as our engineers concerned.
Okay, and he uses probably state standards or whatever, I don't know what the state standards are, but, okay.
I haven't heard that one.
I have, and I disagree with that completely, because you cannot tell me that if you're driving on that, on BB, in or out of town, either in the early morning or late in the afternoon, that there isn't traffic backed up by bus road. And now you're going to put all these housing developments in Shady Grove, are all going to come out onto that road? You're trying to tell me that, that it's not going to cause a traffic issue, or a bigger traffic issue? I can't believe that.
Right, but we have to do a warrant study for traffic lights, too, and that may be how we manage it. Right, and Christie, is it?
Christie, yes. I wish to reinforce what Steve has just said. I agree with him 100% on what he's stated about the proposed widened development, and if any of you have driven on rural Waukesha County roads, I would think that we would have learned from some of their own mistakes of having so many driveways and the speed limits, and it's an issue for EMS, and I would think that Cottage Grove is more enlightened than that, so I would really hope, and if you haven't driven on them, see me, and I'll give you some advice that you can learn from. The other question I wanted to raise was to return to the Shady Grove issue. It's my understanding that when the developer came to you with the plan, that once you really got into looking at it, that there were eight or 10 violations of what was the Cottage Grove long-range plan?
I remember a discussion about that, but I think our plan is just that, it's a plan, and we kind of, we have to work in a vacuum until somebody comes along and says, okay, I want to develop it this way, and then we have to see if it's consistent with that plan. I know Matt and Aaron can speak to that more so, but there's a process for a comprehensive plan, you have to have something on paper in order to have a plan, and whatever, and when somebody comes to us with a specific development, then we have to think if that fits within our parameters, and so it might not fit with what you see on the internet, if that's possible. And the plan, I think, was done significantly before, I don't know how old that plan is now.
How?
Their comprehensive plan, she was talking about the Shady Grove versus her comprehensive plan?
The village's comprehensive plan, is what I understand.
Yeah.
And that there are some guidelines that are, our planner reminds us of the good development plans, and guides us in our planning to follow them, and highly recommend that we follow them, and so I guess I would pass along his high recommendation to you.
Yeah.
Because there are some good reasons for that. EMS and the fire department being one of them, that you would all pay, we would all pay more for fire insurance rates if there aren't good entry and exit for the developments. And I think that's one of the problems with that plan that you have adopted.
Okay.
So I would urge you to take another look.
Right, thank you. Okay. Anything on that agenda item for anybody? I just, I'm taking notes here, so we got, I mean, this is the first time we've met in a long time, so.
Moving on then to El Margot Park.
Yep.
And your healthland annexation.
Yeah, there should be a, there was an electronic attachment, didn't you pack it? You don't have it printed out, but, yeah.
Yeah, and we're putting in some new playground equipment in that park this year, and with your development on two sides of it, I'm wondering, do we want to share that park, or are you going to require that developer to put in your own park, its own separate park, or what?
Yeah, he hasn't sent the annexation, I don't think he's come forward at all, and it was kind of an interesting thing, because he had a developer or somebody with him, and the developer kind of went off the radar, so the landowner himself just annexed, and that's been, I don't know how long it's been, we haven't heard any more from him. But it's a good point, if it's a sizable annexation, then it might be, maybe there's bookroom for both, another park, somebody else, plus a joint park or something, but I talked to, or he sent an email to Sean and JJ that I have no objection if that's workable when that time comes, but.
Yeah, I guess we would be willing to have that conversation with you to share that parkland with your new development, if, if that's going to work out.
Right, but El Margot Park was not part of the annexation, it's just next to it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's on two sides of it.
And what is the road that goes by there? I don't have the map in front of me here, I got to stay on the agenda.
Luber.
Luber, okay.
Luber.
All right. Okay, just so we know where that is. I think Sean and JJ are here, but, yeah, if he comes forward, I mean, that's something we can discuss with them as well. And we do require a certain parkland for, per acre, I think it is, or for housing numbers, I'm not sure which it is.
Yeah, but, I mean, with, in our development, right, it's on the edge, and you're going to have a development. To us, it would probably make sense that we share that park, rather than you having to go and have a new one and maintain it. We might as well jointly maintain one park.
Yeah.
What type of equipment are you planning on putting on there?
We bought it from Burke Playgrounds, but I couldn't tell you what it looks like.
Is it ADA compliant?
No, we buy old stuff. No.
Old metal.
It's just a problem.
Whatever you can get on sale, right?
Just kidding.
Some old steam pipes, right?
No, little bit of rust on it. I couldn't tell you offhand.
That's awful.
Who's in charge of your parks, is it just the town board? Do you have a person, like your highway person, or?
They take care of maintaining it, we have a parks committee.
Okay, I'm just thinking, maybe at some point, our parks person could talk to your parks committee, and when that time comes, and see what they decide that would be best for the whole area.
Yeah, we'd like to have that conversation.
It's a meeting Thursday, actually.
Right.
Jay, I think Jim would probably want to get that on an agenda, the parks committee, to discuss what their plans are.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we haven't heard anything from the gentleman that owns the property, but when we do, we can certainly take that into consideration.
Yeah, right there on the edge.
Sure.
And that was, that was all that I had on El Margot. So moving on to the next item to policing, I thought it was an opportunity that we talk about the benefits that town has seen with, with having, not having the joint department anymore.
Okay.
Back in '14, when we were still together, we were paying $472,000 a year.
Okay.
In '15, it went down to $393,000. '16, $377,000. '17, it went back up to $397,000. And with, with our officers, the income that we get, a little bit that we keep from the court systems, back in '14, it was $24,000. In '15, we had $26,500. '16, it was $25,800. And in '17, $25,800 also. And I'm assuming that in '17, did you add an officer?
I don't remember, I'd have to defer to her.
We've added a voting officer a year.
Yeah, I mean, now we're up to where we're, well, yeah, we have a school resource officer also, but the school district pays three quarters of her salary and benefits.
Sure.
So we have her in the summer, and then the school district has her.
The other night ones.
Yeah, and I wasn't going to turn that down, because Glacial Drummond needs everyone officer out there with 1,000-plus kids, grades five to eight.
Well, anyway, starting in '15, with our mutual responsibilities, our officers have helped your officers 41 times in '15. In '16, it was 62 times, and in '17, it went down to 39, and I was assuming that was because you added, added some officers. In, in the time that we've had Dane County, our calls for service that we get, in '15 was 2,200, almost 2,300. In '16, it was 27,500. And in '17, it was 24,800. And then they have citations that we write, trying to control speeding in the township. In '15, we only had 857. In '16, it went up to 1644. And in '17, 1443.
Okay.
And we've not had a meeting with our residents and police that we haven't had everybody being happy with, with the officers that we have, and the, for hours that we work, and they're very, very happy with what we have, and I think we have far more visibility now with the officers that we have, and with providing space in our, in the old police department that we used to share, we've allowed them to house some of their detectives in there, so we have more presence in the area, which I think is always good for us, that they see them out and about.
Yeah, I know your officers have done a good job with the speed enforcement tonight, and I appreciate that out in the township, because that's where the speeding does get out of hand a lot.
Yeah.
That's good. I think it's worked out well for both parties, honestly, and seems to be, you know, as far as chief labor is concerned, I don't think there's been any issues with not working well together, helping whenever they need each other, but it's good.
Chris, what kind of coverage do you folks, do they provide for you?
16 hours a day. And those hours, they flex, if, if, you know, at the beginning of the school year, if we're having trouble with people passing school buses, they'll start earlier and watch those areas, you know, they flex their hours to match the need and what direction they may get from the town board, and the officers have been very receptive to doing that for us. We have three officers that work for the town, one of them has a dog, so we pay for the officer, we get the dog, though, too, which is good.
Yeah, absolutely, that's good.
But the other case, there also is the fact that we, our judge and our courts, we always had to put money into the courts before.
Okay.
And now we don't, because they're paying for themselves.
Okay.
So that's another benefit that we ended up with, and I think that our sheriff's deputies do say that the town and the village work well together.
Good, that's good to hear.
So it sounds like you've really seen improved enforcement on what you have, better revenue stream by more citation, and better enforcement of what you have presently then.
Right, and I think the biggest thing is the people see them, and they, you know.
Visibility.
Right, they know we're paying for that officer, and they see them out and about doing their job, but then they also see the other county officers that I think are a little bit more in the area, because they know that they cover us, and they're either traveling through, going to Marshall or some prairie area, or down to Deerfield, Deerfield, the village of Deerfield and Cambridge, they contract with them, too, and it's so nice, not having any administration worries or HR worries.
I imagine it is.
And any idea, on the villagers' side, how much mutual aid we provide to the town?
I don't know if that knows.
Do you have anything on M Chief, or is that something that's lost?
With how much?
I wasn't given that question before, so I wouldn't have an answer for that, but when we're needed out of the county, we go, when there's mutual aid requests in the village, they come, works well that way.
Yeah.
But I can certainly get that for you guys after the meeting at some point if you'd like.
Yeah, when you have a.
I think it'd be interesting to see that stat, definitely.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. It's interesting, your costs have gone down, and from what I can see in our budgets, we've seen probably 10% a year, every year going up.
Yeah, there's a different level of need for service in the village.
For sure.
If, if the, if the joint department was. If, if the, if the joint department was together this present day with the same village staff compared to the past joint department that had ten officers, we wouldn't, we would need about sixteen, seventeen officers to have the same level of service we do today. So, so it's, it's not really an apples to apples comparison.
I'd like to see your figures on that. You must have them somewhere, right? What you're saying right there?
Well, we, we had ten.
Well, I like to see your figures, you know? You must have figures that say that.
It's not really figures. We had.
Oh, okay.
We had ten before.
Yeah.
The village recommendation was to have between ten and thirteen. We have thirteen now. If it was still a joint department, we would need more than thirteen officers, so.
And of course, you always know that your backup still is the sheriff's department.
Yep.
Which a lot of people don't realize that, you know?
Even like when your sheriff's deputies where your town officers aren't on, you still have the sheriff's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They're still out there.
And that was prior to me being on the board, but I just remember reading in the paper that we had, after the split, we had less officers, and it cost the village more money, and I never could figure out where the math was going wrong on that. That if we have less, less people to maintain, and yet it costs the taxpayer more money.
That's a good point. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, I, I.
It's 'cause we're paying for the full force versus shared costs.
Yeah.
Right, we have to house them somewhere, so.
And they were all spread out between the town and the village, at least not were concentrated in the village.
Yeah, but see, we never, and a lot of you people were not aboard it tonight, we were not getting the coverage out, and the chief was not there then, but we were not getting the coverage. We were not getting the speeding tickets. We were not getting people to see our police force out in the township. That was a lot of the consternation of the, the whole thing. And we sort of accepted that, you know, that it would be, you know, more probably police coverage in the village than in the town. But as we did find out, after we did break apart, the case was that we were not getting the same coverage under the last of police administration, so.
All right.
It sounds like it worked out well for everyone, then.
Yep.
Certainly did.
Okay. Anything else on police?
Okay.
All right, I guess item six. That's what we got. Is there anything else? Okay. Yeah, good job.
So do, does the town wanna make a motion?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Um, I wanted to go back kind of to five A, but it's not sort of, it's closest agenda item there is. I just wanted to thank the village, just going back to the proposed gas station that was gonna occur up by CVS, the Casey's General Store. I would really like to take and thank the village and the other committees who were or were not involved, whom, everybody involved, for actually sitting down and making a hard decision, you know? I mean, granted, businesses are good, but really realizing that, you know, although it, according to your research, that we did need more business, you know, more gas stations, that that wasn't the place or maybe the time for that particular spot, and you guys said no. And, you know, I applaud you for, you know, actually making a hard decision along those lines, and, you know, I think there's a lot of other people who were happy to see that, too. That's all.
Thank you. Kristy?
I have one other thing I wanted to say, and that is, thank you. As you heard tonight, we had several concerns, and I appreciate, that's speaking for myself, I appreciate that, I think you heard us say we wanted to have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
And you picked up on it.
Yeah, I mean, it took a while, but I'm glad we got the new board here, because otherwise, we had a meeting, and then we got two new board members, whatever, then don't have that background, so. Good to get the same faces all at the same time. Thank you.
We gotta keep this up, because we are still like meeting Cottage Grove here.
That was one comment that I wanted to make as well. We don't have future agenda items or set the next meeting date, but I mean, I would propose that we possibly have another joint meeting around maybe budget time to see if there's, whether it's shared equipment for public works, the town or the village, that, I mean, at the public works level, they actually do share equipment, but as the town and village boards come together and put together a budget, if there's high-ticket items that both municipalities could benefit from, we actually have an idea going into the budget preparation.
So maybe a joint meeting just before budget time, so if you're gonna do something, you can put it in the budget?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay, so August, around something like?
July or August.
Yeah, July or August.
I know we're together, you know, get together.
Yeah.
Yeah? If I remember correctly, we used to meet on like the fourth Thursday or something that didn't conflict with other meetings, but I just don't remember if that's.
I agree. There's a fifth Thursday in August.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth.
Thirty is your notice?
Thirty is Thursday.
Oh, you see, okay.
It's fine with me, I don't have a problem with it. Don't know if everybody's got their schedule planned that far, but if we can at least get it.
There's a Wednesday.
Thirty is of August.
Thirty is of August, it's good. Twenty-ninth or thirtieth.
Twenty-ninth or thirtieth, yeah.
Well, the other question, too, is we have this right after the landfill committee, you guys were here anyway for that, I mean, I don't know if you wanna tie that together, do it at seven o'clock after the landfill, or, you know what I mean?
That would be?
August is not a landfill, it's a fire department.
Alternate.
Yeah.
Okay.
The fire meeting would take a lot longer.
Okay.
It's usually on Monday, though.
Yeah, it works for me.
Right.
February twenty-seventh. So you should keep twenty-ninth or thirtieth.
Okay, twenty-ninth and thirtieth of August, one of those dates?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm fine with seven o'clock, I don't care if it's six-thirty or seven o'clock, I mean, whatever you.
What do you guys prefer?
Six-thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Say we have it at the town. Can you get swap?
Yeah, we've had a lot, thanks for building. I'm just kidding.
It's a lot older.
I don't want any pulp.
No, that's fine, I mean, what we usually do, we do have our meetings recorded, if it's all right, if our guy comes and records it, because some people do watch it, I guess, but I don't have cable, but I don't.
I, I don't have any issues that we go over there, though, either. I must make it fair that, rather than come here all the time, I mean, he goes to other meetings and.
Six, one, half dozen of another.
Yeah, you know what I mean, but.
Hey, Jack and I can talk about it.
Yeah.
We'll have to come up with an agenda.
Yeah, we can do that, I mean, we have plenty of time to work on it, and it's fine. Can talk about the park stuff between now and then, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Anything else? Move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, non-debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, or adjourn?